Okay, we will call to order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council held Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022 at 7:00 PM. I called the roll and I noticed that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you would like to stay standing with us, I'll say a quick invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the developing for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I'm on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Dear Lord, thank you for tonight. Thank you for all of our residents, our staff, our elected officials, visitors that are here, obviously our law enforcement and first responders. Thank you for everybody that shows up to help make Shenandoah a better place to live and to play, pray, and work. Thank you for our strategic partners that take extra care and pride in the work that they do here in this city. And thank you most especially for the heart of service that our elected officials have that are really just up here trying to make sure that they're pitching in and helping make their community the best place for all of our families to live. Thank you for your grace, for your love, for your wisdom. Thank you for loving us perfectly even though we're an imperfect people. We pray these things in your son's name and all God people said.
Amen.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. I think I had some folks that wanted to speak, but there's Ms. Debbie. Thank you, Ms. Debbie. And I think I had a few more people than this, and I'll probably forget who was going to speak, so maybe I should get you to raise your hand later. So we'll start with Mr. Gary Watts. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on agenda items or non-agenda items. Just ask that you state your name for the folks on YouTube, speak clearly into the microphone.
Mayor Council, my name is Gary Watts. I live at 29210 Cedarwood Drive. I am here to set the record straight. I did not convince Esther Lum to run for mayor. I did not convince Gary Henson to run for mayor. I did not hire or solicit Mr. Powell or his council to file a lawsuit against members of this council, staff, or the city attorney. The reason there's a lawsuit is because of the statements made during the January 26, 2022 council meeting, statements by council. He feels he was defamed and therefore filed a lawsuit. There is a history of some members of this council participating in malfeasance and demeaning and ridiculing private citizens. This has to stop. There are facts. Are these, these are the facts. Anyone suggesting otherwise is lying. The local Facebook people who state you need to volunteer for the civic club to be appointed to planning and zoning or have a background in government or qualifications to run for local office are being hypocritical. They are not looking at local history. Mr. McLeod, Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Raymaker, you've never served on any of these committees, to my knowledge, before obtaining a council seat. Indeed, another smokescreen. A demeaning comment to a highly educated and dedicated female. Sounds like you guys would prefer to be in the kitchen baking cookies for the next city council function. I spent quite a bit of time on the council, four terms, never before my first term, never before my first term did I, was I ever on the civic club, the P&amp;Z, or the municipal development district. The bigotry against a female running for office must stop. There is no council more in need of a female than this council. She has a law degree and comes with national and international business experience. During part of her 25-year career, she specialized in ethics and ethics compliance. If you go to her website, you will see her compassion. You will see her goals and concerns for our city. She has listened to residents' concerns and approached them proactively. In my opinion, the city would greatly benefit from Esther and her ability to be a full-time mayor. Get the facts, residents. You need to quit listening to Facebook. Miss Fletcher LaHart Dance.
Thank you, Mr. Gary Watts.
Okay, all fake news.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mr. Frank Powell.
Good evening, councilman and mayor. It's kind of, I wasn't expecting that. I wasn't prepared to even talk about that, but I'll say the same thing. No one recruited me to file a lawsuit against you other than you by running your mouths and saying things that weren't true. And that's not why I'm here to talk. I'm just following up on what's already been said. I initially contacted your chief of police over a year ago before anybody even thought about running for elections. So the lawsuit, everyone's been searched so far except Mr. Fletcher. Glad to see you here tonight because the process server's been notified. He'll be getting with you soon, I'm sure. I hope you're recovering from the flu. I understood you were very sick for the past few days. Hopefully, you're not contagious tonight. Or were you dodging service? We'll see. So what I'm here tonight to talk about is real simple. When I made a request to file a complaint, there's a policy here that you guys are supposed to follow, and your city council or your city attorney chose to interpret it in a bizarre way that not even a first-year law student could make the mistake. And he didn't take the, he did not take the complaint. Then I emailed all of you and nobody responded. And Mr. Fletcher was kind enough to violate Toma and slander me and tell everybody in the whole world, including the people on YouTube and the citizens watching, that in fact, you guys did get it and you chose as a group not to, not to respond. I'm sure you're aware of what a walking quorum is. Collectively, y'all decided not to respond to me on a public policy issue. The public policy issue is whether or not you're going to follow your procedures and take complaints from officers when the citizen hasn't. I think that's an important issue for this community, and you guys had a quorum, an illegal closed quorum, closed session, and you did not announce it in an open session like you're supposed to, according to Toma, and let the citizens know what you're doing. I'm sure you all know that it's a violation, and it's also a criminal offense if, if in fact, it's proven that you did it. I'm not saying it will be proven, but I'm going to file a complaint. Because, Mr. Fletcher, I appreciate your comments, your honesty, but your honesty on that, along with your slander, also got you in a mess right now. And just so you know, I think your wife is in probably even a bigger mess from her libel on social media. And probably the last thing I want to talk about is, I've had, me and my lawyer have had about six, seven people contact us in the last 10 days, unsolicited. And it's kind of horrifying, the things we're hearing. So last thing I want to say, if anybody watching, citizens of Shenandoah, anybody on YouTube, anybody working here, anybody in this room today wants to be a whistleblower, if you work for Shenandoah, used to work for Shenandoah, and you want to tell us what you know and help in taking down this corrupt council, my number is, you can find it on the web.
Okay, next up, Esther Lum.
Esther Lum, 31 South Emery Bend, and I appreciate the clarification that was just given a couple from these two people. I'm here to talk about two things on the agenda tonight. One is the pay scale increase, and the other is the tennis courts. I object strongly to the pay scale proposal. Inflation is hitting everybody, not just the city staff, and we, the taxpayers, don't have the luxury of going to our employers and proposing an increase for our salaries. And I think this whole thing is very insulting to the taxpayers. The proposal is, as I read it, is to be effective April 1. No, this needs to go into the budget discussions like all other spending items. These documents, they also don't give the all-important bottom line. What is this going to cost for the citizens of Shenandoah? And did the staff use benchmarks from other cities that are comparable to our size? If so, what cities did they look at? And lastly, the highest pay grade, 15, EX-6, shows a salary of over $175,000. Now, I assume this is the city administrator, and it seems outrageously high considering the median salary for a state district judge is $155,000. So the way I see this is it's very backwards. The way this is supposed to work is we, the people, we elect the council here, and council oversees city employees. But in this case, we have city employees telling the council what they want on their paycheck, and then we, the taxpayers, are expected to foot the bill. It's crazy. Everybody I've talked to, and there have been several, they all agree with what I'm saying. The next point is the tennis courts. The proposal that is in the agenda is very heavy-handed and is over-regulating. It's, it's over the top. The whole proposal seems impossible to enforce unless you were to have a full-time employee, and we do not need that for the tennis courts. There's a provision that I found especially outrageous, and that would be penalizing residents with fines for tennis instructor violations. I, I think there's an easier way to deal with this issue, and I would ask whether anyone has bothered to just get the tennis instructors in here, talk to them, and see what we could work out. We, we don't have to go through this outrageous set of regulations. Thank you.
Okay, and I think I heard John Houston wanted to come on up. Mr. Houston, former city council member, John Houston. You don't have to fill out a card.
I thought I did. Thank you so much for letting me step up here. I appreciate it, but let me say, first of all, I have no political intention here. I have no public or political purpose. There's just one situation I wanted to talk about. The, I want to read a few numbers, if I may. World War I, there were 117,000 casualties. World War II, 405,389. Korean conflict, 36,515. The Vietnam conflict, 58,220. The Gulf War, 143. Afghanistan, 2041. So in those, those conflicts, those situations, a total of 619,318 men and women, citizens of the United States, that gave up their lives. I'm not even going to talk about the number of people that were injured and how many people are still suffering from those situations. And the reason I'm bringing this up because I take, I take offense on the statements and the bullet point that Mr. Raymaker seems to make, very proud of the fact that he was able to stop the Veterans Park that was intended because the price was extravagant. A lot of people lost their lives. Freedom in free, and I'm telling you, I think there's something wrong with that. If there was something that had to be done because the cost was too high, I don't think there was any intention to make it lower, to find ways to cut. The intention was just for it to not happen. I look forward for the school buses to come up to a very special place and honor our veterans. I'm a veteran. I just, I just lost a brother that was a veteran. Take it back. I didn't lose him. I know right where he is. But he had four different kinds of cancer from Vietnam, Agent Orange. So I just appreciate your concern with me in this process. I just wish Mr. Raymaker would have found some way to do something that wouldn't be so proud to be a part of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that was it. Anybody else? Jeno? No? Okay. I'm just checking. I knew I had a couple, so I wanted to make sure I didn't pass anybody up. Okay, with that, we're going to move into council inquiry, which is item six. Does anybody have anything right now that they would like to bring up or talk about? Okay, and we will move into one of my favorite items, item seven, the MDD report.
All right, all the current projects are on target, either fully designed or gosh darn close. Everything is on target. You can see the wonderful progress that we're making on Holly Hill Park, and that's working out very nicely. It already looks much nicer than it did. So all the other projects on target there. We're going to hear more about the water loan a little later tonight, and all the ACP lines are on target for completion around August, and we are still waiting for additional words on David Memorial. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Raymaker. Anybody got any?
Oh, and MDD took no action tonight.
Oh, okay. Anybody have any questions for Councilman Raymaker about the MDD report? Nope? Okay. Then we will move to item eight, which is discussion and possible action to approve a payroll scale adjustment. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the pay scale. I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilman Raymaker to approve. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion?
I'd like to. Lisa, could you go through the proposal?
So, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? So staff looked at the payroll scales, and we determined that based on market, based on the market right now with other cities and also with the private industry, inflation's rising the minimum wage higher than we have currently ours. So we are having, we are running into some issues with possible retainage of employees, which will also affect the level of service that we can provide to our citizens. Would you want me to go into the numbers details or?
No, we're not going to bore. People can read the numbers.
Yeah. So staff got together, me, Joseph, and Jackie, on the civilian side of the employment, because we did do a PD payroll scale adjustment last year with our city administrator, Kathy Ryer, and we looked at current inflation rates and current market rates and tried to match up to that to keep staff on, to keep level of service up, and also to adjust for the cost of living because, you know, everyone's being hit with the same inflation. So as you see in the packet, the current pay scales gets up that hourly number to competitive rates. The hourly scales include your operators, they include your front desk personnel, they include your accounts payable, your utility billing clerks, your bill inspector, your fire marshal, and we also looked at the salary positions as well and adjusted those to help correct the flow of the scales going forward as well. When you raised the hourly, there was overlaps with the salary scales as well.
So I'm going to ask Joseph, if you don't mind, to put you on the spot. Just one of several departments that we had where you had a vacant spot, if I'm not mistaken, and then you needed to fill a spot, and how many applicants did you have?
So I have an open field service rep position for five months. I had no applications. It's a, you just need a GED for that position, and the information I was getting and when I compared it to other cities is that we're not paying enough to attract any applicants. I did have one last week actually come in, a pizza driver, and that's the one applicant I've had for that position. So I did lose a couple of field service rep. They, they went to other higher-paying jobs. I spoke with both of them with my exit interview, and that, that's what got me concerned as far as my department was, I was losing staff and I was unable to refill those positions due to lack of applicants.
Yeah, so just to be clear, I met with the department heads as well as the city administrator. We looked at the numbers. They had done a market survey to see how we compared with other cities of similar size and in our geographic area. We were below market. There were several instances where we had posted jobs that, as Joseph just talked about, were not being responded to, so we were unable to fill staff positions because we weren't paying enough money. This was the same dilemma that we were in last year with the police department, and we had to have a pay scale adjustment on the police department. And we knew this was coming, and our plan was to do it at Budget Workshop. We all talked about it at the last Budget Workshop. Problem is, we were running out of time. We're losing employees. I want to cite to you a, just for the record, I hate to do it to her, but I'm going to, I'm going to read a message that I got from one of our former employees. Says, "Rich, I wanted to let you know that I've given my two-week notice today. I want to thank you for all you have done for me and my family. I will forever be grateful for you, and if you ever seek to be in politics outside of city government, you will have my entire family's vote. I want to share with you how outstanding Jackie Thompson is. The knowledge and passion she has for the city is amazing. My leaving is by no means a reflection on her. An opportunity has presented itself to me and my family, and I could not turn it down. Jackie is great for the city, and I hope all those who are elected and those who are there realize her worth. Thank you, and I wish you the very best." Bottom line is, this is a very good employee that we had that loved the city, loved the people she worked for, been here for a good, long time, and the bottom line is, we're just not competitive in the market to keep her. Period. And that's something that has to get fixed. When you have good employees and you're not paying them enough to keep up with the market, and it can't always be about the money, but at some point, we all go to work so we can provide for our families. So if you can't keep good employees, you have to make an adjustment. And for one, I'm, I'm glad that Lisa and Joseph and Kathy brought it to our attention. I hate the fact that we lost this one employee. I don't want to lose any more.
And Mayor, if I could add, as we lose people, we won't be able to replace them on this wage scale, on the current scale.
That's a good point.
Well, just the fact that we would lose somebody and have to go through the training curve with somebody different at this stage in the game, with the experience that they have and the work that they've already put forth in our city. I mean, I understand as a business owner, I'm going through a lot of the same similarities with staffing, and unfortunately, in the civilian world and my private business is much different than here as a city, because in my private business, I can selectively make pay raises as I need to. Here in the city, it's not the same. I too would like to see us be able to push this out, but I also understand that in today's market, that's, that's not feasible. With the information that's been provided and looking at and comparing similar positions in other cities for similar work, we're going to, we're going to find ourselves in a world of hurt if we don't make some changes.
Yeah, I don't know if, if we'd have been able to act on this sooner, if that would have, you know, kept that employee to stay, but it might have kept her from looking around. You just don't know. But it's certainly difficult to attract and retain really good employees, and we've got some really good ones, and definitely don't want to lose our leadership team at all. So we don't want to give them any reason to have to look around and feel discouraged based on what we do here. So we really have to take care of our folks.
And we have people actively recruiting our employees.
And it, and it's not so much the cost of living of inflation, but in the work sector at this point, if you're involved in any aspect of it, you understand, especially in a supervisory position, that's exactly what's happening. You have people coming into your house trying to recruit your people to go to work for them because there's nobody else coming to work in the marketplace. And that's happening across the board. That's, that's why we're beginning to see shortages everywhere, why we're beginning to see, you know, other issues begin to fail in our economy. So it's, it's not just simply a cost of living pay raise, obviously. This is about retention in a competitive market. And if I, you know, if the numbers weren't there, if we weren't well below everybody else in the market, I would be kicking this can down to Budget Workshop. But I don't know that we're at that, that stage in this economy that if we lost 10 employees, are we going to recover from it.
And I hate the fact that some of these employees are having to take on second jobs, and there are jobs out there that they could work unless, not as hard as they work here, say, driving up Amazon deliveries or something, where they could make maybe twice as much as they would make here. And that's a, you know, and that's, to me, that's very, very concerning that someone puts eight hours in here, then he goes over to McDonald's or something to, to, has a second job, just, just so he can stay up with the family expenses.
And I'll just add to the, the fact that, you know, it was this council five years ago that came in and really rewrote the budget and shaved half a million dollars off of staffing because we were overstaffed for the work that was being done. And so I, I find it to kind of appalling when somebody makes a comment that we oversee, that city employees oversee us. That, that's not at all what the situation is, and it would really be nice to be a little more educated in that comment and really know the facts that have been presented and where the market really is at, at this point.
And obviously, we wouldn't make a move if the revenue wasn't there, Lisa.
Correct. So to date, with four months of historical sales tax data, we are 18% over what we were last year. That's about $370,000. We're in estimated, I did straight, a straight 8% as a conservative. If we bring in 8% over last year's revenue numbers, we would be bringing in an additional $700,000 over what we budgeted.
And that's with approving the pay increase?
That's just the, that's just for sales tax revenue. Mixed beverage revenue is also up.
Well, we have to go margaritas. Of course they are. Any more discussion?
Yeah, so, so one thing we need to talk about here is, is a lot of our positions, hourly positions, we have sort of multiple people in each of those positions, right? We've got multiple H1s, multiple H2s, et cetera, correct? On the other hand, when you get to the exempt scale, we have fewer of those employees, and they're more specialized. And I wonder if we could make this hurt a little less, and we're not particularly worried about most of our exempt employees, you know, running off to Costco or Buc-E's. We are a little more concerned about our hourly employees working these extra jobs and things. So one possible proposal is tonight, take care of the hourly employees and then take a deeper look at the exempt employees on their positions. Does this position, what does this position look like at other cities? It's difficult to compare because I know our exempt employees go above and beyond. They often wear multiple hats, but that, that might help. And I understand we did some overlapping there because of the hourlies. The top end of the hourlies now overlapping sort of the bottom end of exempt. But that might be something that, that we might consider tonight, is tonight to take care of the hourlies with the intent to go back and dig into the exempt.
If we've done them, if we've done the research and we all recognize that we're below market on what we pay our employees, and it shouldn't matter whether they're hourly or exempt, we need to pay them what they're worth.
But that's my, I, I don't know that, I don't know that we've done the deep dig on the exempt.
Well, then check with Lisa.
We've done, we've done some comms on everybody.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and, and look, you, you lose a tenured, high-level exempt employee, that, that's going to sting a lot more, no offense, but it is. I just.
Well, from my perspective, I, I hear everything you just say, and I agree with it. I think the staff should, we should look at the problem, positions and staff, and take care of that problem. I have a problem. take care of that problem. I have a problem that it took us this long to get to this position. And what I'm really, I'll, I'll be a navel on this, because I don't think a blanket raise across the board for everything is really gonna fix the problem. That's just my opinion.
Any more discussion?
What's, what do you want to look deeper at, Mike?
Mike? Oh, that's me. I was sincerely talking to you. Just the, you know, we, we did this with, with, with police. We've done this with other positions as we've hired them, as we negotiated salaries for, for certain positions. And that's, that's my, that's my question, is if we, if we take a look across the board, is the solution to give every employee this, this same bump, or do we look at the positions and go, what does this position make in this region? And I agree. I think this, this is my concern with the hourlies, and why I see we're losing them, because I can pull up the same TMO boards and see what the cities right around us are paying those positions. And yeah, we, we gotta fix that. So, that's, that's my question. And, and it's just, to me, it's a little tougher to, to do some of these exempt positions, because they're not quite as clear. I mean, no offense, Joseph, but if, if we have wastewater operator, that's sort of a, there's a, sort of everybody understands across the board what that, what that means. And every city who has wastewater treatment plant needs somebody with a certain set of skills, and so I can, I can fairly easily comp that position. I don't know that our exempt positions, again, particularly with the multi-hats, it's, it can be that quickly calmed. And that's, that's my, that's my concern there. I want to take care of everybody. I just want to make sure we're doing it in a, in a prudent manner that, that makes sense.
And I'll, I'll just respond really quickly. You're absolutely right. Yeah. A water wastewater operator, or, you know, some districts are so big, they just focus on the water side, and others focus on the wastewater only. Our operators have both licensing. I, I did look at the exempt positions, you know, the water and wastewater superintendent, who also has dual licensing. I've got dual licensing as well. So, I did look at those exempt positions for not only wastewater side, but also the public works superintendent, project manager, those exempt positions. And, and you're right, it is a little bit different, the duties. So, when I, when I looked at those comps, I tried to find, I tried to find the best ones with the, the duties lined up. I, I just wanted, you know, to assure you that that, that was done. It's not a perfect fit, but that was taken consideration when I looked at finding comps for those positions.
I guess my thought is, so, we've got some of these positions that we, we just talked about, and we've assigned them, this position is worth H1, H2, H3, right?
Right.
Is it the case that we should increase the scale for an E2 or an E3, or is it the case that really that position, that whole position should be changed to an E3? You see what I'm saying? Rather than bump everybody across the scale, do I look at that position, that position you're talking about, and say, this really isn't an E1 position. This should really instead be considered an E2 position, and, and achieve the raise that way?
Are you saying to relocate someone on the scale to move the increase?
That's my, that's my question is, is, is that, because then you, you look at each position, rather than everybody gets a flat raise, you actually look at the positions and compare them to the market.
Right.
I, I just didn't know if anybody had, had attacked it from that position.
I, I guess my initial thought is, you, you could do that for those positions, but I mean, you're really, you're achieving the same effect, because there is gonna be that increase in pay as you move them further down on the EX scale. You know, obviously, the, the starting salary for those EX scales increases for the more, you know, complicated tasks and positions out there. And, and then, yeah, I, I'm trying to, I guess, wrap my mind around how that's gonna change the end dollar amount. And maybe that's not what you're looking for.
If you literally moved everyone the same amount, it wouldn't. My point is, you would look at each position and see what that position is appropriate to.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So, when we looked at several comps, it's what's out there now. So, if we go to other cities and ask for the pay scales, if they're still working on a pay scale adjustment, we're not gonna know. So, I know what Joseph did, and I think Jackie did, and I also did, was looked at current job postings, because they're gonna inflate to try to bring people in, right? So, there's some limit to, limibility on what we could find for some positions as well. And I think, going back to your scale proposal, it's a little bit easier with the PD side, because you have so many people doing the same job. So, like, there's a, there's a patrol scale, there's a lieutenant scale, there's a sergeant scale. When you get onto the city side, we unfortunately have so many different individual, individual positions that you would have to make a pay scale, I guess, for every position, if you wanted to try to approach it that way, like operator scale, or is that what you're going at?
No, what I was saying was, so, and again, I don't, I don't know exactly where the operator, but let's assume that we have a position that's currently E1, and we recognize that that position is underpaid. Maybe we need to move it as far as E3. Compare that to another position we look at and go, well, you're basically being paid market rate, right? So, does that position that's being paid market rate warrant the same, the same increase as someone who is, who is being underpaid? If, if we're looking at this from a, from a holistic perspective, where we're actually looking at individuals and, and positions, the jobs that are being done, there are some positions, and we all know that, are, are underpaid, and we need to fix that. And there are some positions that are being paid probably close to market, market scale. Do we bump everybody the same, or do we look at the positions and look at the actual work that's being accomplished? And that's, that's really the question.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with the across-the-board, because, Mike, I can tell you, as a professional, right now, I'm getting pinged left and right with opportunities $25,000 to $50,000 more a year. And we've got people with unique skill sets in the space that they work in, and somebody's just gonna love to pick one off. And that's what my concern is.
Especially if that person was one of them that didn't get the, the specialized, you know.
It's a rock and a hard place, if you know about it, but I think the bottom line is, we, we gotta figure out a way to, number one, fairly play, pay our employees what they're worth, and number two, insulate ourselves from outside attacks to try to pick off our people.
And Joseph is correct. We ran comps on pretty much every position, every civilian position. And what we have is a very lean staff right now. So, we have, you know, administrative staff that, that wear many hats, that do way more than the, what you might think of as an administrative person. And so, we, we were very careful to consider comps for, for all positions. So, I get where you're coming from, but we did, we did give that a lot of consideration.
Charlie, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just want to understand more of your thought about carving out some things here. Because I, I too kind of agree with you on that. I just, in, in looking at how to do that with some of these positions, I'm not sure how that can necessarily be a problem.
Well, I was in the private sector, and I managed a lot of people, and it's...
Yeah. Well, I, I agree, in the private sector.
Turnover, Tommy turnover, as we call it, is, is hard, okay? You can't, you can't fix it. If we're hiring the bottom 25% of the people, and then we complain that there, there's turnover, then we really ought to look at ourselves. My problem was the process.
Yeah.
I don't think, and I know staff worked on it real good, but I just couldn't get my arms around all of this. And it's me, but I want to fix what's, what's broken, don't get me wrong. And I don't want staff to think that I'm just a no vote, because I don't want to fix the problem. That's not it at all. I just don't, I just have a problem with the process right now. I listened to what Mike said. He, he made a lot of sense that we should fix it more.
And I agree with you. I, in the private sector, I don't look at the position. I look at the person, and the person determines what their pay's going to be.
Well, Rich and I know, in the business I was in, that you, you, you're getting paid, but you negotiate it. So, there is no, there is no scale, no automatic step raises, no other stuff.
Yeah. And that's unfortunately not how the private or the public sector works.
Well, I understand. That's, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel. I just...
Well, I would, like I say, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. I was just trying to understand better how we're gonna do something in that process.
Well, the fact is that we need to do something about it, because if not, we're gonna lose employees. I mean, that's the bottom line. So, to, to totally disregard the, you know, the concept of, of giving them pay raises is, is out of the question. We just need to come up with a, with a solution that we all agree on, to compensate the employees.
I mean, most people agree. We've got to handle something. The question is, what's the best way to do it, the most responsible way to do it?
We talked to the police department, then. We talked about adding people, adding more officers rather than just bumping up everyone else. That was first responders and then civilian. You gotta look at that, or at least I do. I mean, they're two totally different skill sets. And I understand. I just, I just have a problem with a blanket. I just don't think, because inflation's hurting everybody.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we've got a, we've got a thing on here for pumps that's $75,000, $85,000 more. It's just one after another, and Joseph knows all of that, so...
Right. And our tax revenues could be going up, but if everything else is going up, then that ain't putting us anywhere.
I understand.
And we have split this cost across the appropriate departments.
Or funds.
Correct.
The funds, appropriate funds.
I mean, I hope I answered you. I don't know if I did or not.
Okay. So, we've had a lot of discussion. Do we need to have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So, item eight passes with a 3-2 vote. We'll move on to item nine. Discussion and possible action to adopt following resolution, resolution of the City of Shenandoah, Texas authorizing the expenditure of approximately $740,136.64 or more of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds to fund water and sewer infrastructure projects pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Clear that we approved the resolution to accept the ARPA funds.
I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to approve. I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion?
I think spending the ARPA funds on this kind of thing, I know there's been several residents that said we shouldn't turn it back in, but if we deny the coverage, the state's just gonna divvy it out to other cities that, so, it's an opportunity, for example, Tamina Road, to get, get the water and sewer down that, to help them, or what have you. That's, I think it's a good deal.
Yeah, I, I agree, Charlie. Declining these funds would force our taxpayers to pay for this, again, through increased taxes. So, for the average family, for an average family, we're looking at about $700, you know, that would cost, so...
Well, and the other thing we're doing is, we're taking care of an issue, backup sewer line. Joseph can describe, if you would describe what part of this money's gonna be taken care of, the sewer line underneath the...
Oh, for the, the redundant sewer line?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm, I'm very happy to talk about that one, because this came up recently as, as staff was inspecting our one gravity sewer line that goes underneath 45. It's very old. The manholes are very old, and we're looking at doing some maintenance work on them. And as we, as we looked at this, we thought, if we had a failure at either this manhole or the manhole across from Interstate 45, typically, if you have a manhole failure, you can implement what's called bypass pumping, where you can put a pump in one manhole, bypass the one that's having an issue, and put it in another, and you don't have sewage overflowing in the streets. Impossible to do it over Interstate 45. And so, it became a very big concern, and, and it, it fit as a, a perfect project for what this ARPA funding was designed for. So, that's, that's why that project was added.
Yeah. I think the other thing, we mentioned it, but bringing water down Tamina Road is a, is a very important, another very important project, something that we need to do, and it's, it's a, a perfect use of, of this funding.
Absolutely, especially for the growth of our city. And I think, as Charlie said, you know, we can't return ARPA funds to the US government. Doesn't happen. It goes back to the state. The state will use it for whatever they want, and their projects, rather than our residents being able to take advantage of that use here locally. It almost costs our residents, you know, double in taxes, because it's one that they've already paid, because the government's given it, and have already charged the debt. And then, if we don't use those funds, and these are projects that we're gonna use our own funds for. So, it's a double whammy. So, it, it only makes sense for us to be able to utilize those ARPA funds, especially in infrastructure projects like being proposed, so...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but with, with the improvements on Tamina Road, that's only gonna bring property values up for that section of, of the city, and the, and the...
And businesses, eh?
And the businesses, yeah. What, the, the property value, and not, not to mention the, the building, the construction, and, and the impact fees that, that the city would derive from any type of improvement that's made because of the water and sewage extension.
Yeah. And I think about the folks in Tamina that, you know, they've been dying for water and sewer for quite a long time, and we're able to help them. We're able to help our infrastructure in the EDJ. It's a good move.
I think it's very forward, forward-looking to, to apply those funds to those projects.
Yeah. I don't want to, I don't want to kick a dead horse here, but, you know, we talk about ARPA a lot. Well, ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act, and I can't think of any other community that could use the American Rescue Plan more than the community in Tamina. And look, this doesn't solve all the problems, but this here gets us...
It's a good start.
One step closer to helping to provide what is literally third-world conditions over there, to help provide those folks with some light at the end of the tunnel, that one day they might have clean water and sewer like what we have over here. So, I just can't imagine why anybody would want to deny those folks with that opportunity. I think this is a great project for this, for these funds, and, and like so many council members, including Councilman Fletcher, and, you know, if we didn't use these, these monies, they're, they're not gonna go back to the federal government. They're gonna go back to the state, and the state will find another community that is in the same situation, or maybe not quite as bad, but a, a situation where they could use these, these funds. And all we would be doing is, is one more time denying the folks over in Tamina this opportunity. So, I can't think of a better project.
If I could echo that, the Department of Emergency Management did send out an email last week noting that any non-entitlement unit that did not use their funds was gonna be put back onto other non-entitlement units that have applied for the funds. And since that, since the agenda was drafted, we did receive another $713 from TIDOM, and there's probably gonna be more.
Thank you, Lisa.
And that's why we drafted the resolution to say approximately.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We will move to item 10, which is discussion regarding the use of city-owned tennis courts. This is discussion only.
Yes, Council. If you recall, about a year ago, we had a number of complaints from residents that were attempting to use the tennis courts, and there was a tennis pro out there occupying both sets of tennis courts with his students, and telling the, our residents that he had those tennis courts reserved. We brought this to the attention of City Council, and at Council's suggestion, I wrote a letter to the tennis pro who was the main culprit, if you will. That letter was totally ignored.
The main or the only culprit?
Well, probably the only. The, that letter was totally ignored. Our second attempt to solve that problem, we brought back to City Council, and we placed a sign saying that tennis courts could not be reserved, and that, and I can't remember, Joseph, what else the sign said, but notifying people that you could not reserve the tennis courts... else the sign said, but notifying people that you could not reserve the tennis courts. We continued to get complaints, and we continue today to get complaints from residents as the latest ones were people that wanted to play pickleball, and he's occupying not only one set of tennis courts, but two. And he just tells them, I have these reserved and you can't use them. So we've tried letters, we've tried signage. The latest thought is to pass an ordinance, and I came up with just a list of ten possible things that might be included in an ordinance, and that was what was in your agenda pack. The goal of this is not, if, if a parent has, wants to have their child receive a tennis lesson, that's fine with us. What we want to avoid is someone occupying two sets of tennis courts for four to six hours at a time, denying our residents the ability to use those tennis courts. And so that was, when you see this list of ten possible items to include in an ordinance, that's kind of the thought process. How can we allow our residents to use the tennis courts? But at the same time, if someone would like a lesson, they're, they're able to have their child receive a lesson.
It's about fair use.
Yes, it's about fair use. Yes, correct.
And if you're a private business, I mean, you can't use all the maintenance service of a public park for your business and keep other people from using it. It just doesn't work that way. So, so just to verify, we've contacted by letter.
Yes.
My understanding is that we've also sent out police officers to talk to him.
We have, I forgot, we have sent police officers out to talk to him, yes.
We've paid for signage.
We've paid for signage.
And he's still denying public access.
That's correct.
And he's apparently bullying people in the process.
So then the only, the only alternative is to have an ordinance that would press him to leave.
Correct.
At this point.
Yes, right now, our police officers can only say, please don't do this because there's no ordinance in effect. There's nothing that.
And they're just park rules, so.
Yes.
There's nothing to enforce, I mean.
Correct.
And it's not that we have to impose all of these, obviously.
No, I.
These are those things that we talked about last week, so we can kind of narrow it down to a few.
It's a discussion item, that's right.
Yes.
That's my favorite part about this is.
I like number two.
We're getting trouble for.
I like the, the way number two is set up. You get one hour a lesson on a single court, a single person per day. And I like hours or clock hours. I think some of this ends up being redundant. I mean, number four, if you can only do one a day, whether you do five or seven, I don't know that that's, you know, I don't know if you'd need four if you're passing something like two.
I don't know about six, though.
Yeah, well, I definitely like three as well. Yeah, I think six may be, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, take out six. Okay?
I think we'll take out four. I think three is, is absolutely, again, we talked about a single court. I, I don't like the idea of them taking up one person, eating up two courts.
Right, right.
There's, there's no reason for anyone, like whether you're doing lessons or just out there, you shouldn't be allowed to take up both tennis courts.
You shouldn't be running an academy out there.
Well, yeah, I just, anybody, you know. The other thing we've talked about is, you know, do we want to do reservations? Throw that back out there. We do it for the pavilion. We make it an opportunity. I mean, we, we have the pavilion reservations. Do we want to have reservations? And so.
Do it for the pool.
Yeah, I mean, we, there are other amenities in the city that we have reservations for. That's another possibility. And, and I think we've gotten the pavilion working pretty well, if I understand the staff.
I would be in favor of reservations if somebody was giving a tennis lessons for fee. I think they should pay for it. Because we have to maintain.
Just to have the, I mean, if he can claim that it's reserved, he can go, yeah, see, here's, here's my reservation.
Do the same as we do for the pavilion.
From four to five.
I don't necessarily know that I like that for a resident that has to pay for it.
No, it's an option, right? Just like the pavilion.
Well, you're, you're in business. If, if he's paying for it, the resident's going to end up paying for it. You know the way that works.
Well, they're going to pass it on.
You're going to pass it on.
But that's only if you want, you know.
So if you want to reserve it.
If you want to reserve a specific time.
Twenty bucks or whatever.
What, yeah, whatever the pavilion is. I'm just, I'm putting that out there as another option, as another idea. Again.
But otherwise, it's open.
Otherwise, it's open, just, just like it is now.
I don't want to go over the top to stop one guy, right? We just need to stop the one guy.
Yeah, and what happens when little Johnny is out there playing tennis, and they show up and they kick him off the court because he's got a lesson, he's going to, you know, it's.
It's the same as pavilion, right?
We're going to, we're going to organize.
Yeah, but at least, at least the pavilion, we have somewhere to post it.
This is an ordinance we're talking about.
Well, you would have somewhere.
I think we would put somewhere to post it. What's that?
You would have to create some.
We'd have to put something, yeah, that, that then people would have to check before they start playing their tennis game, that somebody's going to have the court reserved.
But you can have the same rule, right? You've only got, you can only reserve an hour a day. I mean, but what's going to trigger this? A violation?
A complaint.
By?
A resident complaint.
To whom?
The same place.
Same people, they call in and complain, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, we can add on the side the number for either code enforcement or the police
department. I mean, it's, it's sad you might come to that, but apparently.
Unfortunately, I think you would have to do the police department because code enforcement doesn't work.
Correct, correct.
Do we want, do we want number one? Do we want them to actually register with the city? Is that an important?
That, that to me is, is a little bit different in that it's a philosophical thing. If you have a professional giving tennis lessons, does the city want to know who that person is so they can contact, we've got their contact information.
Well, then the permit process.
Well, and it's not, it's not a lot different than reserving the, the pavilion, is now we have contact information. If, if you want to reserve the pavilion for a birthday party, we know who you are and can contact you. I'm not pu, I, I'm not pushing that one way or the other. I'm just saying it's, is that information that we, that the city wants to have available so that we can say, yes, tennis pro Smith is giving a lesson between two and three? I mean, it's.
Might that be handled by reservation?
Well, and if we, if we do a reservation, then number one's not necessary, correct?
No, it's four.
And we can do the reservations like we do the, the pavilion.
The only thing I'll say about having them register is that then we can track who's reserving it for what, you know? Otherwise.
Right.
I could go reserve the tennis courts just because I want to take Matthew out there and go play tennis.
Right.
But if we're having somebody come and give private lessons on the tennis court for a fee, it would be kind of nice to be able to track, this is the private business, this is a resident using the court. So I, from that standpoint, I would like to be able to keep up with who's out there running a business on our tennis courts.
Well, yeah, I mean, it gives you the opportunity to check them out, too. I mean, are they some kind of offender, a sex, sexual offender? We don't know if we don't check them out, but we're allowing them to be on our court. So if they were registered that way, I think that would be helpful.
And if there are any injuries involved during that, the training session, who is liable? We need to know if, if the instructor has insurance to cover any injury to the students, or is the city going to be held liable because they, they tripped and fell?
That's a really good point, John.
Just open Pandora's box.
So I kind of like the reservation fee for someone or reservation process.
Yeah, I don't, I don't dislike that.
That would eliminate one, that would eliminate three.
I, I don't, I still don't think it would eliminate one. I think, I think we still need to have number one.
Still have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I still think we need one.
Because, because again, I could reserve the court if I wanted to. It doesn't mean that I'm giving instruction.
Yeah.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that it would eliminate a process that the city
would have to follow or deal with because if it's an instructor that's reserving it, it doesn't really matter. We have his contact information at that point. I mean, we'll know because there'll be this residence box for the pavilion versus the non-residence box, so.
When you register on the Civic Rec, it makes you put in an address and make a whole profile?
Mike, you can't really even point out residents and non-residents.
Well, you can't.
It's a public park.
Right.
When you register for reservation, you do, there's a, there's a box where we put the address and you create your profile.
The point is, you're creating a, you're creating a registration already when you're reserving the court?
Yeah, right.
In that process.
Right.
Well, then we would need to have one extra note in there as to whether or not it's some sort of paid instruction.
Paid instruction.
Yeah. For, just for me, that's what I would like to say.
Well, absolutely. You can't go unwhether you reserve it or if I reserve it. No. I mean, they're just using, they're reserving the court.
Reserving the court. And then if you go down that road, you want to ask, do you have another, you know, are we going to limit them to reserving one hour a day? You know, nobody can reserve a court for more than an hour a day.
Yes.
That's fair, yeah.
What about a caveat in there to cover any, the responsibility falls on the instructor in case of any injuries or any accidents or anything like that? What do you think about that?
That could be added to the registration.
Yeah. Just stick it on the form, yeah.
So if Bill, Joe, and Don want to play pickleball down there, so Bill could do it, John could do it, Ray could do it, and they'd have it for three of them. The kids?
Yep.
But at least, we're only going to, but at least we're going to only occupy one court, so our residents can use the other court.
I understand, right. And if you have a foursome in tennis, it's the same thing. Are we going to be there for four?
There's only one court with painted for pickleball. It is.
So we'd have to do the reservation, both for pickleball and for tennis.
Wait, you probably want an indicator on the form to tell me what court you want.
Right.
Yeah. We, we can do that, right, Lisa?
So what was the question?
Put indicators to which court you want to reserve.
That would be Chris's question.
Chris, can we do that?
Uh, yes, you, you can, you can do that. I just, I just want to point out that, keep in mind, it, it's kind of an honor system. There's no way to prove when somebody's going in there and registering, or what address they use, or.
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, we're just on a.
It doesn't matter where they live. We just want to know when they're going to reserve the court.
Yes.
And whether or not they're paid instructors.
We can do, we can do tennis courts in there, and then, and we can, you know, we can add whatever, whatever facilities we want.
Let, let me take this discussion and get with Chris and come up with a registration form and see if, given your comments tonight, I think I know how we can prepare an ordinance.
I would think we would just look at it like we did the pavilion, or we're going to do good shit.
Yeah.
Let's give that a try.
Yeah.
Let's give that a try before we head down another road.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? Nope, good. Let's move to item eleven then, which is discussion and possible action to approve purchase of electrical panel and pump for the Pinecroft lift station.
Would you like a quick update?
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, no, go ahead, Joseph.
Just real quick, this was budgeted for at the, for this fiscal year. It has taken us this long to finally get pricing for the panel. Electrical is difficult to get a hold of, but this is to replace the panel at that lift station, which is original to the lift station. It is in a very poor condition, and this is very much needed. So this project includes replacement of that panel, the multi-smart for the SCADA system, as well as purchasing a twenty horsepower pump for the lift station to use as well. Now, I, I did note, I can't remember at which meeting when we were discussing this, the fifteen horsepower pump that this twenty horsepower was intended to replace failed, and we had to replace it early. However, I do recommend still purchasing this pump. It can be used immediately at another lift station, and just like a lot of different pieces of equipment, they're getting difficult to obtain. And so I'd feel much more comfortable having a spare pump on hand should we have any failures and we're waiting eight months to a year to get a replacement pump.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Broad. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion? So this is, this cost is for the pump only, not installation?
It's, it's for.
Is what the bid says.
The pump's easy to install. You just run it down the rails.
That's what I'm assuming. We, we can install it onsite ourselves?
Right, yes. The panel includes installation, and we did still come underneath the budget, just a little bit, about, about five thousand dollars, so that's also good news.
Hey, something under budget's great.
Especially nowadays.
There is a, a long wait for the panel, but we need to get this ordered and start that wait.
So is this wait going to take care of the hospital or what?
We, hopefully it'll be done before the, the tower's completed, but also including in the agenda, this was noted in the 2020 wastewater modeling that we did, that this panel and pump needed to be replaced. I've got my fingers crossed. I, I believe we'll get it in time.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any approved? Motion carries five oh. Okay, item twelve, discussion and possible action to adopt filing resolution. A resolution by the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in connection with the receipt of financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and approving other matters incidental thereto. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Broad. I have a second by Councilman Escado. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I think so.
So.
I have some discussion.
Mayor and Council, Jonathan Ferrells with Bracewell. Our bond counsel is here for any further questions.
Perfect.
Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Jonathan Ferrells. I'm with Bracewell, and we serve as your bond counsel. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or give you some explanation.
So in this particular bond, is, how's repayment made? Is it mandatory ad valorem, or can it be NDD funds, or can it be sales tax, all of the above?
The intent of the city is to repay this debt with water and sewer system revenues. It is intended to be self-supporting. When you borrow money from the Texas Water Development Board through one of their financing programs, you have to evidence the loan with the security. In this case, we used a CO because it's the most efficient and effective mechanism for accomplishing that purpose. But at the same time, you do have a cer, you have a surplus, you have an ad valorem tax and surplus revenue pledge that's associated with it. But the city's intent is to pay that from water and sewer system revenues. And, and using this particular mechanism allows you, again, it's very efficient. It allows you not to have reserve funds that are associated with it, so you're not tying up additional funds for your water and sewer system. So it is a, a very, it is the lowest cost option for ensuring the repayment of these.
So with the addition of, of this amount to our existing debt, that brings us to roughly twelve-three per se?
Yeah, so.
Or part of that that's required ad valorem.
You're, you're currently outstanding debt that you have. You have approximately twelve million dollars that's designated as self-supporting from your water and sewer system revenues. So this would be added to the twelve million that you currently have that's payable from your water and sewer system revenues. And Lisa, I'll let you speak to any additional amounts that may be outstanding on the ad valorem tax side. I believe the total amount on, on the ad valorem tax side is, takes you to approximately, do you, do you have that, that number?
With interest and just principal?
Just the principal side of that.
Just the principal, I have, as of fiscal year in 2021, I have eleven thousand nine, I mean, eleven million, nine hundred and three thousand, back to my ad valorem.
And so the interest rate on this is one point seven percent, is that right?
So that's the approximate interest rate that's there. The actual interest rate will be set when we come back in May to actually do the ordinance approving the COs, and that'll be set by the Texas Water Development Board accordance with their scale approximately five days before.
Yes.
Before that.
But that's what we're estimating.
This is the current estimate that your financial advisors provided.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that, that our residents. Well, I just want to make sure that, that our residents understand that this is not something that would require us to increase property taxes, that this is self-sufficient and/or we can help, if we needed to subsidize through MDD funds, there's not a problem with utilizing those funds.
No, there's no problem. So as you go through, again, the, the intent is to pay these from water and sewer system revenues. As you pay these from water and sewer system revenues, as your budget cycle each year, as you're working on it, if there are other funds that are available, and you want to set them aside for the payment of this debt, you can do that. The intent is not to levy taxes for the payment of...
And you've seen evidence of sufficient revenue stream through our enterprise fund to support this.
Yes, the Texas Development Water, oh, so sorry, Texas Water Development Board required us to provide adequate financials and inform us that our financial advisor provided, based on our current water rates and our current water sales.
Specifically, the enterprise fund?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So that means we won't have to increase water rates either to accommodate?
Yeah, when Mr. Vial, with Vial Associates and Joseph and I looked at the water rate study, we factored in about, I think it was about $400,000 payment each year.
Yeah, our previous water model factored all that in.
Yes.
You have a term set, the one where we retire the debt?
Yeah, so, and I'll look to Lisa a little bit on this, the maximum is, is 40 years, but I don't believe that we're going out 40 years on this.
I believe we did 30 years.
Yeah, 30, 30 year was what was included in the, in the form.
When we come to budget workshop, can we talk about amortization for 20, what that would look like?
I'm sorry?
When we come to budget workshop, can we look at 20-year amortization rather than Just to see what the difference would be.
I believe the sale of the bonds are going to be in May, or the ordinance to sell the bonds are in May, and the actual sale's going to be performed in June. So I think all the financial analysis that we did was based on a 30.
That's okay, you can prepay it without penalty, can't you?
So there is a, there's a, there'll be a 10-year call that's associated with it, and so there will be an option, and you, and the, the way the calls work on Texas Water Development Board debt is it's inverse order of maturity, and so you'll take the, the later years out, out first as you do that, but there is typically a 10-year call on that, and it's, it's a no, it's a at par call.
Actually, staying corrected, we did it 20 years.
20?
The maturity's at 2042. I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask John Vial, what do, what would your estimate, yeah, no, she loved when I, I mean, I could have called Derek or...
I was just getting comfortable back here.
I know you were. What do you see as the, as the, I want, I know the term lifetime is not the correct, but what's the lifespan of, of the, the expansion, do you think? If you had to put a number on, I know this is a total guess, but...
Well, this is, this is an interim expansion, it's really addressing the permit issue, and then there will be a future expansion, I think it's five years out, right? Yes. And I think it's in your CIP five years out.
But then what would the lifespan of that, of that...
30 or 40 years.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. Longer than the amortization schedule.
Wanted that cleared up. Thank you.
And Mayor, I'd like to also just add, we're going to be issuing these on a tax-exempt basis, and so we've got to at least match the useful life and the amortization of the, of the debt, so that, that is something that we'll take care of, not only from that side.
Useful life, that is such a better term than what I came up with. See, that's why we had you here tonight. Is there any more questions or discussion? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 13, discussion and possible action to adopt filing resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, designating the authorized check signers for the City of Shenandoah banking account with Allegiance Bank and authorizing all other necessary signatures to validate banking resolutions with Allegiance Bank.
Move to approve authorized representatives.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher, I have a second by Councilman Escado. Do we have any discussion?
I did have one question, Lisa, on the PID signer, is that an either or or a both required?
So the PID account is set up, there's no checks issued, it's just a straight transfer from the tax assessor after they pay their special assessment, and then it goes straight to a trustee fund at UMB Bank to pay off the debt. So there's no check signer capabilities on that account, you just have to have two authorized signers, so.
Okay. Any more discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 14, discussion and possible action to adopt filing resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, designating the authorized check signers for the City of Shenandoah banking accounts with the Allegiance Bank and Texpool and authorizing all other necessary signatures to validate banking resolutions with Allegiance Bank and Texpool.
Move to approve authorized users.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Fletcher, I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 15, discussion and possible action to adopt filing ordinance, ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, suspending the rates proposed by Centerpoint Energy Resource Corp. as stated in your agenda package. Am I going to read that whole thing?
Council, this is our annual GRIP adjustment. The ordinance will suspend it for 45 days if denied.
So move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Broad, I have a second by Councilman McLeod. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 16, update regarding the Vision Park detention pond expansion and amenity projects. And I think we get to hear from Jennifer.
Yes, we do.
Is that okay? I can bring John up here if you'd rather him.
Will you rejoin my speaker again? No, we'd rather you come up.
Aw, thank you. Earlier this year, we talked about Vision Park Pond, and MDD had some suggestions that they'd like to see added. We also talked about it at City Council, so I'm here to give you an update. So the things that came up that we looked into was adding parking at the end of Pine Forest Drive, adding some benches and trash receptacles, moving the sidewalk a little bit further away from Wellman Manor, adding a vegetation buffer a lot between Wellman Manor, and then the connection on Wellman Road and pedestrian lighting. So the picture that I'm showing is just like a nice Google Earth with our exhibit over it, so you can see. We're adding three benches, one on the west, one on the north, and one on the east near the 50-foot pedestrian bridge. We're also adding some vegetation on the north between the park and the development that's going in. Landology is our subconsultant, and they are, they work with us on the vegetation, but they're also working with the developer to the north, so we are encouraging that developer to add some vegetation up there as well, but there is a water easement, so I'm not sure exactly how much vegetation they're going to be able to add there, but I want you to know that Landology's working with them to try and put some on that side as well. The parking at the cul-de-sac, I'm going to zoom in and show that to you in just a minute. We are shifting the sidewalk away from Wellman Manor, as close to the pond as we can before it starts to slope off, you know, we can't get too close, we've got to keep it safe. And then we added a vegetation buffer at the corner near Wellman Manor as well. So to zoom into the parking, you can see that we've added three parking spots and one ADA van accessible spot. We did, we are going to have to remove a little bit of the existing sidewalk that's there in order to make this addition, and we will have to install some additional sidewalk with a pedestrian ramp at that location. Y'all stop me if you have any questions.
You're doing fine.
Thanks.
Well, actually, I do have a question.
Great.
What were the solid yellow, what's the little yellow squares?
The little yellow squares are your proposed parking spots? The green are the trees.
The filled-in yellow, there's like two little filled-in...
The ADA ramps.
Oh, those are the ramps. The slopes, part of the sidewalk down.
Well, that's the sidewalk, so we moved to where it is and where it's detected.
It slopes it down, okay.
Yes, yes. The sidewalk will go around the head-in part of the parking, and then they'll have to slope down to get to the elevation for the accessibility.
This is going to be a really stupid comment, but if there was any way to make that where it's not such a sharp turn right there, I see a lot of, only because I take my kids riding their bikes a lot on that sidewalk, and if, I, we see a lot of kids, we see a lot of kids riding their bike.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'm going to see if I can, nope, can't do that. Let's see if I can point. Over here by Joseph, Joseph, don't blink.
Yeah.
So right here, that's where the ramp will be, and then the sidewalk comes around. The reason it's coming around at such a weird angle...
I see it, the manhole comes.
There is an inlet right there, so we have some drainage concerns right here. If we move the sidewalk across, then it almost makes more like a bridge right there, adds a lot more cost.
I will just add, this is an eight-foot wide sidewalk, so it's very large.
Do, and they negotiate for a kid.
Yeah, they, they can, you know, cut into that turn.
And as you can tell, it doesn't line up perfectly when I bring our image into Google Earth, so it's, when you zoom in like that, you kind of start to see, it will line up in the field, we won't have like a weird little offset. If we do, we'll make the contractor fix it. And then the next slide, we're showing that connection down to Wellman Road, so as you look in the plan view, we have the 100-foot pedestrian bridge, and then the sidewalk goes south towards Wellman. At Wellman, if you look at the bottom of the screen, that's like the street view of this, of that location, that's where you already have an existing pedestrian crossing, and on the south side of Wellman Road, you have a pedestrian bridge. So by leaving the sidewalk, we're connecting right to where you already have a pedestrian ramp, and we're giving you an accessible route across Wellman Road and, and further to the east. So we felt like it was really important to go ahead and keep the sidewalk at that location, that was a recommendation to, to remove it. The other thing is where you have all the vegetation between the sidewalk and the pond, we're going to underbrush that vegetation, so you'll actually be able to see all the rock wall water features from that sidewalk, so it should be a really nice little location.
Nice.
And then the last slide is the pedestrian lighting. We are putting pedestrian lighting around the park, there will be one light over by Wellman Manor, but we're going to make sure that we put the locations of the lights to minimize the light into Wellman Manor and maximize the light at the park. So we're putting it at the end of the drive at that location.
MDD requested that by the houses, that that's by, that those be lower level?
They did, yes, they requested, there are 20-foot-high lights, and they requested them to be lower along the Wellman Manor section, which we believe will increase the number of lights to keep it a solidly lit path.
Any questions for Jennifer?
Wait, I have one more slide.
Oh, okay. Your slide, your slide. I was, I was just reading your mind.
Well played, Jennifer, well played.
Do y'all have any questions for me?
I don't object to the sidewalk being, there are, there at the end of Kingston, there's two houses there. There is a fence, I don't know how much traffic that's going to, that sidewalk will generate and when possibly at night it may.
It's not any different than the sidewalk that goes on the north side of the neighborhood.
Exactly, that's my point, my whole point, so.
So you said you do not object?
I do not object to it, to where you've got it, no. But I don't live there either, I'm just saying I don't object.
Just looking at the park in general, if you're coming from the east side of the park, it seems kind of silly to have to go all the way past the park to then turn around and go north to go into the park. So leaving it there, and again, it is already a pedestrian crossing, and you already have a ramp, so it looks like a perfect location to connect.
How did MDD feel about the project?
Um, they were, well, would you like to comment?
Other than the height of the lights, I don't recall anything specific. I think Byron mentioned about the sidewalk, but I think most people like the idea of the sidewalk that connected directly across the way.
They, they said that we addressed all their comments.
We also talked about sense of urgency, so we're still waiting on the contractor to enter the agreement, and that's going to create the sense of urgency.
Right.
If the contractor doesn't enter into the agreement, then we're going to kick it to budget workshop. If they do, then...
We'd like to perfectly time this either with the developer or with David Memorial to be able to use that dirt for David Memorial, that'd be a significant cost savings. I know we do have to haul it from here to over there, but if the developer used it, they'd be hauling it about the same distance, and we're going to use a substantial amount of dirt for David Memorial.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item 17, which is discussion and possible action to ratify the accounts payable for February 2022.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Raymaker, I have a second by Councilman Fletcher, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. That brings us to item 18, which is our citizens forum. We did not have anybody sign up to speak.
Yeah, I...
Did you? Okay, I did not get a card, so come on up.
I didn't sign up twice.
Esther Lum, I just want to follow up on the discussion on ARPA. I mean, I know it's a done deal, but, you know, you're talking about helping Tamina, and that's a good thing. I mean, that thing has been going on for years, right? But when I heard the ARPA fund discussion for the first time in the summer, it was talking about smart meters for water. I think you might have brought up Tamina at that time, I'm not sure, but I, I just want to clear the record here that I'm not against helping Tamina, but, again, the smart meters was what got my attention, and that was something that we clearly didn't need. And then also, I just want to say that nobody mentioned that these funds come attached with strings, and I hope we don't get bit down the road with some executive order or some other regulation that is going to be attached to these funds. That point didn't seem to be, didn't seem to cross anyone's mind, and, you know, I just want to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Okay, item 19, city administrator updates, that would be Kathy.
Council, I have a few things for you tonight. First of all, Texas Water Development Board loan, as Mr. Frelles mentioned earlier, the closing date on our loan is June 22nd, so that's good news. I want to thank John Maynor, he coordinated a Houston-Singapore Airlines rodeo fam tour, and it was March 13th through 18th. This tour included nine travel agents and a journalist from the UK, as well as two escorts on a week-long tour of the greater Houston area. We hosted them at Even Hotel, we did a driving tour of the city, a shopping event at Picket Fences, and lunch at Good Company Cantina. We received very positive feedback from those guests. This event, this great event allowed us to highlight everything Shenandoah has to offer, and it was in partnership with the Woodlands, but John got great recognition for his part in this, and they intend to contact him directly for future events of this nature, so that was a great thing for the city. Also, we had a girls' softball tournament back in February, I believe I emailed y'all about it. We finally got our post-event report, and, which concluded that our sponsorship generated over 300 room nights for Shenandoah Hotels. That, that was a big positive during a off-peak time. We have a bid opening March 30th for our police vehicle cover, and a recommendation of award will be brought to council in April. And finally, we have Trash Bash this Saturday, 8:00 to noon, and then Easter egg hunt on the 9th, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Kathy.
John?
We'll move to item 20, which is council inquiry. We'll start with Councilman Raymaker this time.
A question for Bill, there are no strings attached to the ARPA funds right now, correct?
No.
Thank you. And Kathy?
Yes.
How many of my department heads are female?
Well, including myself, there's Jackie and Lisa.
So how many department heads do we have?
Courtney.
And Courtney is city secretary. So female city administrator, female finance director, development director, and city secretary.
So we kind of like how y'all work out.
We think we're working out great.
Lest anybody think that we're anti-woman. Aren't you the first female city administrator in Shenandoah?
I don't know if I'm the first, but certainly the first one in a long time.
Okay, thank you.
How many department heads do we have totally in the city?
We have five, including the police chief. So three of the five are women.
Thank you.
With Courtney, that would be four, yeah.
She's like a department of one.
She's an army of one.
She's like an army of one. Radar.
That's all I have tonight.
Mr. Scottum?
I don't have any.
Mayor Proton?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cloud?
I'm good tonight.
I don't have anything except for we don't have another meeting between now and the Easter egg hunt. So we won't get to remind you again. Make sure you're there. Make sure you tell your friends and your neighbors to come. Every year, it gets a little bit better. Let's make this one even better than last year. You know how much I love it. Thanks for coming tonight, everybody. We really do appreciate you. We're going to recess the regular session and move into executive session, consult with attorney for pending litigation, retain counsel for pending litigation. So we will recess the regular session at 8:30. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.